Before we get started, you lead us out a little prayer there, Mr. Robinson.
Yes, sir. Let's pray, y'all. Dear Lord, we're grateful for the day that you've given us to enjoy. Though we ask that you be with us tonight, dear Lord, and guide us with your spirit, dear Lord, that the things we say in our, uh, and do in our decisions would line up with your will. Though we are just grateful for each planning commission member who's here tonight, and we're grateful for the staff of Lynn and Treva that you blessed our community with. And just, uh, be with us as we travel home this evening and after the meeting. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you. I will call it June, I'm sorry, Tuesday, October 12 meeting to order. We have a roll call, Mr. Pope.
Mr. Lofton Allen.
Here.
Mr. Kane.
Further.
Mr. Jeff Robinson.
Here.
Walter Robinson.
Yeah.
Ms. Barnes Rhodes.
Here.
Ms. Odell.
Yes.
Ms. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Mr. Anton.
Here.
Thank you. We have approval of the agenda that you have in front of you. Are any additional items to the agenda? And if not, can I have a motion to get approved?
I have no added items.
You have no more items?
No, sir.
I have a motion to approve it. Have a motion to second on the floor?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. We have minutes for my last meeting, uh, that was August 10, it looks like. Uh, I trust everybody's had time to scan over them. And if you see everything's in order, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes that printed.
I thought they looked great.
Yeah.
I make a motion to be approved.
I'll second.
Motion, a motion and a second. Any more discussion on that? If not, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Uh, the next item is a public hearing. I need a motion to go into public hearing.
Shall move.
We have a motion to the second to go into public hearing?
Second.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in public hearing to hear ZTA dash two dash twenty-one, Greensville County. The attachment B.
All right, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, at the September seventh Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, the Board of Supervisors, uh, referred two items to the planning commission for their, uh, comment and recommendation on. Uh, one of these items was the imposition of a maximum acreage in Greensville County that could be utilized, could be utilized for solar facilities. And specifically setting that maximum at seven thousand six hundred acres, which represents approximately four percent of the total acreage of Greensville County. Uh, the other is establishing a hundred acre minimum, uh, for an approved solar facility. Uh, the board wishes to consider these two items in an effort to preserve the rural character of the county. Uh, when you look at adjoining in other counties, uh, throughout the state, Brunswick County just similarly passed an ordinance that set a ceiling of eighty-five hundred acres for solar development. Uh, eighty-five acres in Brunswick constitutes two point three percent of the total acreage in Brunswick County. Uh, they also looked at Prince George County. They've set their limit at two point seven, four percent of the total acreage. Uh, and Rockingham County is considering a cap between fourteen hundred and two thousand acres. Uh, I put, uh, in the staff report there, the excerpts from the comp plan and the zoning ordinance, uh, that pertain to solar, uh, that's on page two and page three. And, uh, the board is concerned about the rapid pace at which solar development is taking place throughout the county. Uh, right now, we have five projects that totaled four thousand six hundred and twenty-one acres that have already been approved, but it hadn't been completed yet. Uh, and as you're well aware, uh, the county's been contacted by numerous other, uh, solar developers. And since the staff report, I went to the PJM. Uh, is everybody familiar with the PJM is?
Explain that again, Lynn.
Okay, the PJM is the, uh, Pennsylvania, Jersey, uh, Maryland group that, uh, manages the transmission system in thirteen states, and Virginia's part of that PJM. So anybody that wants to apply for a utility scale solar project has to apply for the PJM to get the project approved by them, uh, before they can go any further. And it's a total of forty-two projects in the PJM, and not all of those are active. Uh, some of, well, five of them are the ones we talked about that are under construction. Some have been withdrawn for one reason or another. Uh, more than likely, uh, the projects are cost prohibitive, uh, in order to upgrade the line, the tire, tire project into the system. So I imagine that's, you know, some of them were, like I said, over budget. Uh, but the active projects that are still in the PJM is three thousand four hundred thirty point nine megawatts of projects in Greensville County in the PJM. And there's an additional, uh, nine hundred and eighty acre project that's gonna be a hundred and fifty megawatts getting ready to apply. So I don't know when they'll apply, but they notified me they were getting ready to apply. So if they apply, you're going to have over four thousand megawatts, not acres, megawatts in the PJM system trying to get approval for projects in Greensville County. Uh, uh, the board is concerned about the density of some of these projects in several areas and the long-term impacts of solar, uh, as well as, is some of the projects, the developers are inquiring about land that's better suited for residential commercial development. Some of these projects are located within our urban service development area where we have, uh, commercial properties with both water and sewer. Uh, those properties are limited in Greensville County. You know, we're kind of limited as far as where we can, uh, develop commercially due to, uh, the limited, uh, water and sewer services we have throughout the county. I think, uh, the board would like to see some of these projects in construction completed, uh, to see how they fit in the county and how they turn out. Uh, any of these, uh, regulations put in place could be changed at another date and time, uh, to allow for more. But right now, as I previously stated, and the board has previously stated in other, uh, board meetings, uh, they want to slow it down, at least till some of these other projects are approved so they see how they turn out. Uh, we do not want a case like they got in Louisa County right now. I'll y'all up to Google that, uh, and look at the nightmares they're having in, in Louisa County with some projects. Uh, but like I said, they want to establish a minimum of a hundred acre for an approved solar facility instead of, uh, sealing, uh, seven thousand six hundred acres. So that'll, that'll allow about another three thousand acres available for solar development, uh, based on, uh, uh, the draft ordinance here that's in front of you. So the board wanted to get your comments, your opinions, and any recommendations that you may have considering, uh, their wish.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Pope? Any comments from the planning commission on this?
Well, not right now. Do you want to, do you want us to discuss, or do you want to hear from the public first?
I'm gonna hear from them, yeah.
I did want to ask Lynn to elaborate on one other thing. Is now the time to do that?
If you want to.
Yeah. Lynn, can you elaborate? Is, because really up until now, we've been most concerned because the projects keep, seem to be getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And, but here lately, we've had a couple of small projects.
Yes.
Come before us. So can you explain kind of the downside of the smaller proj, the things we need to be careful of with the smaller projects?
You basically have two types of projects, uh, all on a utility scale, anything over a megawatt utility scale. Uh, you have these large projects, when they first started, they were eighty megawatts. Uh, we've got one coming up, or might be coming up to a hundred and fifty. We've had some, four hundred some megawatts, uh, they want to do in the county. Uh, these are the projects we can get tax revenue off of, of course, the land values increase, uh, they're assessed, a commercial assessment, which, uh, we get, uh, additional revenues from the change in the use of the property. And we also adopted the, uh, revenue sharing ordinance where we can tax them fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt per year, and I think it's, uh, two percent inflation built into that too, over the life of the project.
And tell me again, what, and what's that called again? The what tax?
The revenue share ordinance.
The revenue share, that's, that's it.
That was the fourteen hundred dollar per megawatt. Projects less than five megawatts were not allowed to tax. Uh, they can come in tax-free. Uh, the big problem, and I call these co-op projects, these are usually the co-ops that want to do these projects, and they can go on three-phase lines, they don't have to go on distribution or transmission lines. Uh, these projects, all the proposed ones we're receiving are like the Country Club project. Uh, y'all just heard that a month or two ago. Uh, they're right up against neighborhoods. Uh, we've got two or three on Dry Bread Road, right up against existing neighborhoods. Uh, of course, the Country Club project. Uh, all but two have been located in the urban service area where the property is, I feel better suited for, uh, commercial type development. You know, we, like I said earlier, we have limited areas, you know, we can zone commercially for that type of development. And that seems to be where all these projects are going, is, is in the areas that even if you look at the metrics that we used to have in the comp plan and put into the zoning ordinance, they're still wanting to go closer than a mile to the city, closer than a mile and a half to another project. And remember the commercial hubs? Just about every one of them is, is sitting close to a commercial hub in the county.
Oh, Lynn, I, I'm not understanding, you know, why you're talking about that we, like we have these projects. We don't have these projects.
They're proposed, yeah.
Right, they're proposed.
Correct.
So we haven't heard these projects. So it's like, you're trying to sit there and shut them down, and that's, you know, that's the purpose of this board. That's the purpose of the planning commission, is to hear these projects. I think we did a really good job in shutting down the Stride Bass project because it was zoned R one two B. It was in an urban service area. Water and sewer was on the cusp. It was between ninety-five and three oh one. So why would we put a project there? We didn't.
We didn't.
We, we voted not to, to rezonate.
Correct, because it wasn't the highest of best use.
So, that's the last project that we've heard. We have approved five more. That's it. We, we don't have any other projects before us. I, there's rumors, you can't walk down the street without somebody saying, well, there's gonna be a project here, and a project here, and a project here. No, there's not gonna be a project there because you have to come before the planning commission, and we have to hear it. So it's like, you're sitting over there and you're trying to scare everybody that all of these projects are coming, when in fact, they have to go through a process just like the five others that have been. But you're going over there going, oh my God, there's gonna be a project on the Drive Bread Road, let me see how we're gonna shut that one down. I'm sorry, but that's not, that's not fair. That's not fair to the citizens, it's not fair to the landowners, it's not fair to the developers, it's not fair to anybody to say, oh, well, these projects want to go here, and it's a bad thing. We need to hear the projects, and we need to decide if it's a good thing or a bad thing. So, so let's reframe those questions, okay? Because it's like you're trying to shut something down that hasn't happened. You're trying to prevent it from happening. I think we can all see the writing on the wall that the board of supervisors was trying to prevent them from happening, and you're really good at, at, at talking about one side of the issue, there's always a flip side to the coin. And we haven't heard anything about that, at least the first fifteen minutes of this meeting. So I think you, as a staff person, need to reserve judgment, okay? I, I would ask that of you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just one, one other question. Uh, Lynn, the revenue share thing, the fourteen hundred dollar per megawatt, is that a one-time or is that an annual?
Annual.
Annual. Mm-hmm.
So of the ones that we have approved, that would relate into, in terms of dollars? How many megawatts have we approved?
No, it won't, because the ordinance, and I don't have the dates in my head, I think it applies right now to, uh, Fountain Creek.
Okay.
Because of when the, the, uh, state legislature approved that house bill was in
The others pre-dated.
Went to effect July first of twenty twenty.
Right. I only have one comment, is that this, this board, a planning commission met, and through a lengthy process, we listened, coffee was here, and we made recommendations. We made about four or five recommendations to the board. And then somehow or another, in a little while, this just popped up from the board. It didn't come from us, it didn't come from the public, it came from the board of supervisors. And I think they've already made their mind of what they want to do. Because we worked in good faith, I thought, to come up with a list of, it wasn't in the zoning, but it was in our, gonna be in our wish list, of where it was, the size it was, the visibility.
That was in the comp.
And I thought that made good sense. That's why I was surprised that this popped up. I came to supervisor meeting that night, and I was kind of in shock. I didn't, uh, I guess if you'd got on the website, you could have seen it coming. But I just looked in the paper, as to what items were in the paper, and they were the very items that we had suggested to them. But then at the end, up comes this twenty-four, what is it, um, uh, resolution twenty-two thirty-one. It just popped right up. And, and I don't know, maybe other people here were, were, uh, figured it was coming. We had a full contingent of people, not radical people, obviously, they were people who have a dog in the fight. There were Dominion Energy was here, and a very prominent person for Dominion Energy. I've told he was the, the vice president, is that right? Does anybody know?
He, he was, Emile Avram.
Um, they are under strain because they are under a mandate to try to have green energy. I'm not sure green energy is the right thing, but I'm not, I, I don't know that it's not. I don't know that it's any cheaper. I can't, I can't believe it's cheaper, but we are headed down that route. And, um, I was just surprised it came up. I was here, I think Ms. Wiley was here. Was anybody else at the board of supervisor meeting? You were not. But it kind of popped up, and to tell you the truth, I thought it was a done deal. I thought it was gone. And I was kind of surprised to see it on our agenda again. Anyhow, anybody from the public want to speak? Come on up. It's not many of us here tonight, Mr. Ray. I don't think you're gonna speak too long. I would like to maintain it, but we're not gonna call you out if you, if you do go a little long.
Yes, sir, thank you. I don't, I don't intend to go long. I, I don't want to go long. First of all, thank y'all for letting me be here and speak. And the first thing I would say is, uh, I didn't prepare anything. I was very confused myself about what was being discussed tonight versus what I thought I heard at the board of supervisors meeting. But I want to say, as long as, uh, even before solar energy was a, a word in Greensville County on other issues, I will say landowner rights. And, and I know that that doesn't give a landowner a right to trample anyone else or hurt anyone else, but, but please, landowner rights, it means a lot. Someone in my family spoke at the last meeting about, you know, owning property in family for over hundreds of years and continue to pay taxes, pay taxes, and some of these people, and now in my case, we have an opportunity to actually make some money on property, maybe, maybe not, but it looks like the board of supervisors is gonna take that opportunity away from us before we even get a chance. And, and I'll go ahead and throw some things at, at you. There, there are a million things that could prevent, uh, Dominion from putting solar property on a hundred acres that I own. Um, but this was one step that we may not even get to. But if that were to go on the hundred acres that I own, you would not see it without turning into a private driveway and driving three-quarters of a mile before you would ever even see the property in question. So I think it's greatly unfair that we would pass a ordinance that would eliminate or potentially eliminate me before I get to clear any of the other hurdles, along with other landowners. But I will also say that from the board's standpoint, I will say this, uh, I think we all recently got our tax bills in the mail, and all I can say is, is ouch. I mean, it's big, it hurts. I do not like paying taxes, I know they're necessary, but I feel like I pay more than my fair share. And, and I heard what Mr. Pope said about the board, but honestly, I heard Lynn say more about how the board felt than I've ever heard a member of the board say how they felt. I, the board doesn't talk enough about it for my taste. The board can do what they want, but I would like to hear them debate and say, why, why not, or because of this or because of that. But we didn't, we don't get that conversation out of our board. And, and I know that I'm preaching to people here that aren't on the board. The second thing I will say is, is income for the county. You know, Mr. Pope said the fourteen hundred dollars an acre, and it goes up, but it's also the property tax increase that the county gets, and, and I don't know where to cap that dollar figure at, but I'm gonna say it goes into high millions, if not hitting billions over a period of time, potential revenue for the county. And yet, the county, we just borrowed nineteen million dollars for water and sewer project. We have hired a new county administrator while we were still paying an old, and we have created a new position, we've created all these new positions that is constantly spending money. And I know the county has to spend money to progress, but it looks like you poked your finger in the eye to a potential bill payer with Dominion at the last meeting. I would like to say, if I were king for a day, bring Dominion and other vendors back to the table and say, how can we leverage this the most for Greensville County? Get income and, and not overrun the county with solar panels? And, and I've heard that said about overrunning the county. I did some research. There's a study out there on Virginia right now from a VCU student, I didn't bring it with me, but I'd be glad to share it, but ninety-five percent of all solar projects in the state of Virginia are within one mile of a main transmission line. So they're already kind of hindered, and that, and that's a cost prohibitive thing for the, the solar industry. They don't want to carry it much further than a mile because it's too expensive for them to, to move it. And if you take all the land in Greensville County that lies within that two miles of that power line, and then you take all the wetland out of it, you take the land out of it that is not suitable because of grade or anything else, you're only looking at a small percentage of the county. Um, and I don't think it's fair to say what Brunswick County has done, or what any other county has done, because they may have more or less availability for solar because of transmission lines. So to say that Greensville County is at four percent versus another county being at two percent, well, without comparing what's actually available for solar, that's just a number. You know, I would like to see the county go back to what this board recommended, and I'll paraphrase, look at each project individually, take it on its own merit, decide whether it's right for the county or not right for the county, and then push it forward. And the board of supervisors, even before all of the changes at the last meeting, always had to write to accept or deny a project. I think these new rules have only hindered, like Ms. Wiley said, bringing it to the forefront. And if the county needs somebody to help, why not create a new position for four years or five years to review and study solar projects? I mean, they, they're creating new positions for finance, new position for personnel, create another one. I mean, I can't stop them, nobody else can stop them, create that position, get Mr. Pope some help to look at it and see what works in Greensville County. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. State your name, please, we knew who Mr. Ray was.
No problem. Uh, my name is Jamie Mears. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of a developer by the name of Orsted that has ownership of one of the, the projects that is currently in the queue but has not yet had the opportunity to come in front of the county. And I just quickly wanted to first second everything that has been said before me, but then also encourage the county to, to take a closer look at the property that lies within those one-mile buffers of the transmission lines, because Greensville County, from a developer perspective, is in a very unique position to take advantage of the economic benefits of solar development in the state of Virginia. There's a lot of counties in Virginia that wish they had your availability of solar land. There are counties in Virginia that are too steep for us to look at. There are counties in Virginia that do not have enough surface area within the mile of a transmission line where we are not able to develop. And some of the counties in the state of Virginia that have come up with these acreage limits fall in areas where we're not able to develop. And so, in my opinion, it is not a comparable situation to choose your acreage limit based on what other counties have selected when Greensville County has more available land for solar development than, say, Culpeper County or Rockingham County. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Coleman. I'm a county resident for the last, I don't know how many years, old and dirt, I reckon, but, um, I come before you just to let you know that I, I concur with what Mr. Ray said, and he, he put it to you like it should. But I really think that one thing that needs to come out is for the planning commission to take on what you have actually been thrust upon from the county board of supervisors, and go through the public hearings and do what y'all have done to gain the knowledge that you needed, and then for the county to turn around and just disregard that like they did at their last meeting by, um, not taking the recommendation of the planning commission when the, all of this stuff was actually put into place in two thousand and nineteen. And then to bring it back up two years later and not adopt anything from the planning commission and send it to the board, and then they completely go against what they said, it, it behooves me to really know why we're here tonight. I'm, I'm almost like Mike, they, they, they know what they want to do before. So hopefully, you can convey to them that by doing this is really putting restrictions that don't need to be done before the county, and, and go on merit, and go by each individual, um, project, and, and decide whether it's good for the county or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
I'm Bobby Ray, I'm Mike Ray's wife. So we inherited this land when my father-in-law passed in two thousand and nineteen that we currently own. And when solar first came and talked to us was that next year? And we said, no, don't want it on my land. Didn't want anything to do with it. I did come to several meetings a few years back when there were some projects in Brink to support landowner rights. And then I got thinking about things, and I thought about my farm, and I thought about how much I pay in taxes, and I thought about how my tax bill is normally about three to four hundred dollars more than my farm check. I thought about the poor farmer who has, I've had three farmers on my land since two thousand and eighteen, and each year, they have an insurance claim. Each year, they can't grow, I mean, it's clay, it's rocky, it's hard. Then we were talking to one of our representatives on the board about solar, and they told me they just could not support solar because of hunting rights. I'm a different kind of woman. Both my boys killed their first buck with mama. I hunt, I enjoy hunting. I haven't bought ground beef in probably fifteen years. My boys eat from our farm. We feed them off the farm. But that's our land. That's my decision what happens on my land. A few years back, someone approached this commission, they wanted to put a hunt club at the end of my road. Did I want it there? No, I didn't want it. I live in a very quiet neighborhood on Scotland Drive where it's mostly family. One end of the road is all raised, the other end of the road is the Turner Family Center. We get along great. Since the day that this planning commission decided to put that hunt club there, which I told you I hunt, I support hunt clubs, I can't sit on my front porch in the quiet on a Saturday morning in my pajamas like I've done for twenty years, because I've got trucks up and down my road nonstop. I spend every week picking trash up from one driveway to my farmhouse driveway, beer bottles. Since the Turner Family Center went there, every time they have a party, I am worried as to if someone's gonna wreck, because people come flying, going seventy, seventy-five down my road sometimes. But you know what? It's their land. I can't tell them what to do with their land, they need to do what they want to with their land. And as my husband said, if we chose to do a solar project, no one would see it. I have a huge oak tree buffer that's never been, you know, hardwoods has never been cut back there, that no one would ever see it from, and it's a perfect location if we chose to. I have in my hands at my house, our original handwritten deed from eighteen twenty-one when that family settled from Scotland and bought that land. From eighteen twenty-one, they've been working that farm, and they lose nonstop on that farm. It should be our family's decision what we do with our farm, and if it's not suitable for this county, and it doesn't look good, you should have that ability to say, no, it's not appropriate for this county, but not a huge limit on it. I'm a nurse, I've worked in this community, I've seen the disparities within this community, I've worked as a school nurse in our schools, they're pitiful. Our children's schools are pitiful. We need new schools. We need a lot in our community. Find a way to bring that revenue in to help our kids and help our community, is all I've asked. And when the board shut it down, it just limited that ability. So that's my take on things, and I hope you all think about that as you move forward in whatever it is you've been asked to do tonight. in whatever it is you've been asked to do tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Any other comments from the Planning Commission? Okay. Then re- let's restate what, what our goal here is tonight. We've had a public meeting on this. We came up, I thought, with our recommendation to the board. But then we're back tonight to bless, what they want us to do is to bless the limit, is that, is that what it is?
The Planning Commission has not had a public hearing on these two issues before you tonight.
The two issues are what now?
Uh, maximum acreage of...
Seventy-six hundred.
Eighty-six hundred, and a minimum project acreage of a hundred acres per project.
But they came up, they came up, we had had a public meeting earlier. These have come up, these came up at the last Board of Supervisors.
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, the public has spoken. Uh, each commissioner's had an opportunity to look and think about it, I guess. If there's no more comments, I'll entertain a motion to, I guess our deal is to bless it or not approve it.
You can make recommendations, you can not agree with it, they won't hear your comments and your recommendation.
Well, I mean, for me, again, we've already, they restricted solar. They restricted solar by saying, we can't have a project more than a thousand acres. So, and then they put all the other limits. They, they moved everything that was a suggestion into the comp plan, they moved that into an ordinance, and at the same time decided that we're not going to allow cooperative-scale solar. From my take on it, again, like Mike said, like Steve said, you know, I don't know what the board thinks because they didn't discuss it. I'm not even sure if they understand what resources that Greensville has. We have a hundred and fifteen KV line. We have a two hundred and thirty KV line. We have a five hundred and fifty KV line. That's three major transmission lines in Greensville County. Brunswick County does not have that. Southampton County does not have that. So we are uniquely positioned, and we have the topography so that they don't have to do tons of grading, so that they can turn a profit on the project, because at the end of the day, they can't develop a project if they can't make the numbers work. So I don't know that our board under, that the Board Supervisors understood, understands that, and I also don't know that they couldn't understand it. If you are blessed to have a five hundred kilovolt line in your county, then in order to develop a solar project and hook to a five hundred KV line, you have to have more than a thousand acres. You have to have three hundred megawatts or more. And so if you've got to have three hundred megawatts or more, then clearly you've got to have more than a thousand acres. So we are wasting that asset of a five hundred KV line. That five hundred KV line pulls power from that rock, from our brand-new Dominion Energy plant on Rogers Road. There are two five hundred KV lines that pull the energy from that plant and throw it onto the grid. So we're now not able to take advantage of the five hundred KV line because the board has said, hey, we can't have a project over a thousand acres. So we've killed any solar project that can go onto a five hundred KV line. So what you're doing is you're, you're going to overrun your two hundred and thirty and your hundred and fifteen KV line, and you're going to make all the projects be concentrated there until those lines are tapped out, because you can't use the five hundred KV. And, and I'm still not convinced that our Board of Supervisors understands that. Mr. Kane is sitting there and, and, and he's not saying anything, and I don't know if he knows what I just said or not. I don't know if the other three understood that or not. And, you know, you mentioned Louisa. I saw on TV what happened in Louisa. You know, they, they had some stormwater problem. They had a stormwater problem. That is the very issue that this board needs to talk about. They are the types of things that we need to maybe beef up. I am never going to say that our ordinance is perfect, but that's what we need to spend our time on. We, we have an engineer sitting right here amongst us, again, which is another asset to Greensville, who could completely help figure that problem out. So why not take advantage of that? Also, Louisa has decided, hey, that they need a, a, um, a, they need a solar board. They need a solar commission, because the projects are coming and they're all, there's, there's all this detail, and no one is saying that the Board of Supervisors can be well-versed in all these projects, because frankly, you've got too many other problems to deal with. And so that's the whole point of having a board. That is the entire purpose of having a board, so that we can get down to the fine details, into the nitty-gritty of what we need to do and make recommendations. Of course, if you're not, if you're not going to, you know, listen to our recommendations or even come to us and say, hey, we, we can't go along with this and have a discussion, but there's no communication. It's just like, you know, it just came down from above that this is happening, and we don't even know why. And, and I'm very concerned that a lot of it is because they don't understand. They, they don't know the resource that they have, because I, I don't think that they would maybe feel the same way if they knew that they were lucky that they had three transmission lines. Greensville has never been in the top ten of economic development in my lifetime, and we are now in the top ten of economic development when it relates to solar in the state of Virginia. So I don't know why we would want to pass up that opportunity. And not only, you, you're passing up on an opportunity of utility scale, but now you're denying, you know, a small project as well. There are a lot of people in the county who might have twenty-five acres who might want to put solar on those twenty-five acres. The, that can go directly onto a distribution line, which is just your wooden poles. It can go onto that, and that helps our community, because Mecklenburg Electric doesn't have to buy the electricity from Dominion, because it's coming from our own land. And so, no, the state of Virginia doesn't allow us to tax it, but, because we, the county is getting a tax break on their utility bill. But we've totally shut that down, too. So we've shut down large projects, we've shut down small projects. We're saying you've got to be in the sweet spot of, you know, less than a thousand acres for some unknown reason, because we, you know, we can only take advantage of our two lines, two transmission lines, not our five hundred KV line. It seems to me as if they're just trying to shut down certain projects. I mean, that's very obvious, that's very clear, because we've had a couple of big projects, again, that I hear that are rumored, I have no idea, because they don't come before this planning commission, that had been trying to come before the board, but they keep getting a slow roll for an entire year, and, and they don't get brought up. And, you know, all of a sudden, you know, it gets passed, it gets shut down. So I'm not, uh, clearly, I'm not voting for us to limit the seventy-six hundred acres. I don't know why it matters, because we're not going to have any more solar development. Even these projects that are, that are eight hundred acres, the solar developers need investors to invest in these projects in order to make them happen. And so when an investor sees that we can't make up our mind because we had a solar ordinance in two thousand and nineteen, then we totally changed in two thousand and twenty-one, now we're getting ready to hopefully finalize our comp plan, and this will get revisited again in our comp plan in February, then it could all change again. So an investor is not going to invest, and so just because you think you saw forty-five entries on PJM does not mean that those forty-five are going to be there in a couple more months. It, it does not mean that absolutely at all. There, there are things that have been sitting there and sitting there for two, three years now, because yes, I've looked at, at the PJM site, I've looked at it with, I've looked, they, they have twenty PJM sites in Brunswick County two years ago, and they did not even have a solar ordinance. So looking at PJM and not understanding exactly what it's talking about is not serving anybody well, because you, there are a gazillion things that can go wrong before it ever gets to the Board of Supervisors, and there are a gazillion things that can go wrong after it gets to the Board of Supervisors. And so just because they're there, it's like they, you know, they say, hey, I think I'd like to put a project here. I raise my hand and say, hey, let me have a hall pass. That's all it is. That, that's the only thing that that does. It secures them a spot, and then they hope that they can get a project going, but they may not. They may not get enough landowners to agree. They may have all sorts of issues with the land. So, you know, it's, it's, I, I think that they've been scared, and they don't need to be scared that solar is going to take over. And again, if we feel like that all of a sudden one road is inundated with solar, then, and, and we're listening to each project, we get to decide that, we get to have public comment, we get to listen to our constituents and decide what they want their community to look like. So I think that the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors needs to be that they need to rethink what they did on September the seventh, and maybe they, we need to have a meeting with them and talk to them and answer some questions. And if we don't have the answers, I'm sure we can find some solar developers that will come talk to us, and they don't have to be solar developers that are developing in Greensville. I am positive that I can find some that are not developing in Greensville that can give us an unbiased opinion and that can answer some questions and maybe calm some fears. That's my recommendation. I don't think we need to add any other restriction to it at this point. And maybe they might want to consider having a utility-scale solar commission if they feel like it's too overwhelming, because again, the governor, our governor and our, and our, and our legislature passed this Clean Economy Act, and they allowed the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission to make these decisions. They can take that away. Not every state handles solar like this. We are, we, Maryland does not han- handle it like this. The solar companies goes before the state corporation commission. So again, the Board of Supervisors needs to be careful what they wish for, because if solar developers keep getting pushback, they're going to go back to the legislature, and they're going to say, hey, we can't develop anything. Localities aren't letting us, we can't play ball. And when that happens, there will be no more siting agreements. There won't be anything, because they'll take it out of our hands. And so we will lose the one opportunity that we had to actually get some real revenue. It's not about the fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt per year, it's about siting agreements, about being able to, them to write a check for whatever it is that we need.
I would like to make a comment, too, please.
Go ahead.
I can understand that Ms. Riley is very passionate about her opinion. Just as the, the landowners that came up and spoke their piece. But I think we do our colleagues a disservice by beating them up when they're not here to defend themselves.
He's here.
He's just one person. We got all of, just, we got a, um, we got a form of planning personnel here. He can't, Bill can talk for Bill, but he can't talk for anybody else. I'm suggesting that when we're in church, when you're at work, I don't care what activity you find yourself in, you have to have some sort of consistent policies and procedures in place for, for folks to go by. I don't feel like between, let's say, I don't, I don't have the number in my head, if we have nine members on the Planning Commission, why can't nine members collectively use their brain power to come up with some educational strategies to help out our, our community? I don't feel like we need to hear, hear every single case, because in some ways, that's what we're setting here, to make some informed decisions based upon input that we get from them, but we, we, we put it in the mix of things. What I wish that we would do tonight is take this home, look at it, process it, then have a meeting with the Board of Supervisors to have them state their case clearly and then move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from down this end? All right.
I, the, the one thing that I would, would just like to say is that I feel like we've done our due diligence with the regulations that we, policies that we have in place, and I'm still comfortable with those. And, uh, I would just like to, to, to see those enforced, that we study each project case by case on its merits, and then use good judgment, uh, on a project by project basis.
You're talking about the metrics that were in place in the comp plan before they took them to the zoning ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So you're saying that we got nine percent of our property under solar farms, that's all right in Greensville County? You don't, you don't think you'll have a limit on solar farms in Greensville County?
Uh, I think that we should use our judgment and limit the solar development to certain areas so that they don't get overbilled in certain areas of the county. Brink is a good example of that.
I'm, I'm sorry we ever approved the first solar project.
Say what?
I'm sorry we ever approved the first solar project, right through the candidate that's got solar farm and look at them.
I understand.
That's a very detrimental on a driver.
I understand. But I think you would also agree that, uh, Mr. Allen, had you had a thousand acres of land that was under a transmission line, you would probably feel different.
I probably would.
Thank you.
I can't disagree with that.
Okay. All right. Is anybody going to make a motion that we've got to either say we approve this or we don't go along with it, I guess?
Or you can defer it, or if you want to have a meeting, if y'all want to have a meeting with the Board of Supervisors.
I'm still willing to have a meeting with them. But I think we ought to vote on this tonight. We defer a lot of things.
But somebody else, I could make a motion. Why would we vote on this if we're going to have a meeting with them to talk more about it?
I'm sorry, what?
Why would we vote on this if we want to have a meeting to discuss it with the Board of, with this Board of Supervisors? Wouldn't that be premature?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not sure we're going to change their mind. They've already made up their mind because they approved it at their meeting. They came up with this themselves.
I understand that. But I also understand that I've, I've been hearing that when we had the Board of Supervisors available to us, they weren't as talkative as we needed them to be. So why can't we have a, have an opportunity to communicate with them before we decide that this is the way that we want to go?
Well, I mean, again, you know, we, we put this ordinance in place in two thousand and nineteen. One of the reasons that we started with solar was because two thousand and nineteen was the year that we were supposed to redo the comp plan. So my recollection was that we were starting with solar because solar projects were, were starting in the county, you know, and, and applications were coming in, so we thought, well, that's the place to start. So that's why we started there, and we came up with the ordinance. And then we moved on, of course, into other sections of the comp plan. Then COVID happened, it got put off for six months, then we started back in the fall, you know, on working with it, and then at the same time, you know, then this got brought back. back up again. It was like we just got it finished and then it got brought back up again before we ever even got a chance to finish the comp plan. We still haven't finished the comp plan, I'm assuming you're going to probably talk about that to us tonight because we still have more public hearings to go with that and solar is in, is in, is in that, you know. I think Kelly had talked about that a future land use designation could be solar, there's rule designations, there's like four or five designations and that we could have solar as one. We never have even explored that path yet because we haven't finished that. So it's like, I don't even, I don't, I'm still, again, completely confused as to why this had to get interjected into our whole comp plan process again because we were moving kind of right along. And to Mr. Antorn's point, you know, this could be discussed again with them when we have our next meeting with them or are we going to have another comp plan review meeting? I don't know.
I think we're supposed to have another meeting, two meetings on this.
Yes.
One or two.
Trevor, do you remember the date? Two weeks.
Okay.
Is that a joint work session, like the last one?
This will just be with the planning commission, the next one, correct, Trevor? Yeah.
Well, let's invite them, I'll move that.
What?
Let's invite them. The other thing, Leanne, about whatever happens here tonight, down at the bottom on the proposed amendment to Article 24, Section 3, is that what, is that what we are here tonight to vote on right there?
In the red, yes, sir.
In the red, all right. Okay, we discussed it a lot, we can entertain a motion to, to just, that's what we got to address tonight is the proposed Article 24, Section 3.
Leanne, what do you think about that, about us having, having that as a topic of discussion in our next joint work session?
This, I was thinking to schedule a separate meeting just for this.
That would be, that would be fine, but I would, I would, man, encourage everyone to attend that. The last couple of ones we had, we didn't have good attendance from the planning commission. That doesn't accomplish a whole lot if we're not here.
Okay.
And I also would encourage, I'm hungry to hear from some other people their thoughts about this thing, it's pretty much one-sided and I, the passion is over here, there's knowledge throughout the room. Let's get somebody else talking other than these two people right here.
Well...
Does that make sense?
If you'd have been here at the board of supervisors meeting, and we've had a couple meetings that there was a lot of passion, but truthfully now, the passion is coming from the solar developers and the people who have land within a mile of the, of the line. That's where it is. Now, when we first started back in 17, 16, there was a big push from the public against You recall, we had meetings over at the, at our meeting place before COVID and they were quite raucous, but anyhow, but there's clearly a dividing line for people who have a vested interest in it and the people who want to develop it. And Dominion is interested because they are under mandate to have it. I thought it kind of funny the other night at supervisor's meeting that before they made a motion to, to install this, they wanted to get Dominion to come and build another gas-fired plant. I thought that was kind of odd, but that's what came out. Anyhow, what are we going to do? You going to make a motion, somebody going to make a motion? We can make a motion, do what we want to do and still have a meeting.
Well, I, I think it would be, it would be logical to have a joint work session on this and defer action on this until that time.
All right, is your motion to defer it?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to defer this section, Article 24, Section 3 for tonight till we have a meeting with the supervisors. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
We have a second. Any more discussion on that deal? No more discussion, I'm assuming you're ready to vote, all in favor deferring this matter? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Who was that, somebody said? He's opposed, okay. All right, any other matters, Mr. Pope?
Uh, no, we'll be sending out a notice about the joint workshop or the workshop for the comp plan update process. So you should be getting that, you'll probably send it out this week, won't you, Trevor?
I need to clarify...
All right.
This meeting that you all are planning is solely for solar?
Correct, the one they're talking about would just be...
...and the planning...
Correct.
We need to call Kelly and get that...
Yeah, we will schedule a meeting, y'all just request it and get back with y'all with the date and time.
All right.
And meanwhile, we'll be getting a notification about the comp plan update process in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Is that going to be in October, do you think, or November?
Uh, we tentatively have two dates we're trying to work out right now in October, late October. So as soon as we can nail down the date, we'll send a notification out and a copy of all the materials as soon as we can.
Okay. Any other meeting, I'll have, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move?
We have a motion on a second, we have a second, all in favor of adjourn, say aye.